Yes, Mayor.
It is Commissioner Dick's turn to do the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please go.
Dear God, thank you for giving us today, and thank you for giving us the cooler weather. Please be with us as we go about our day and make decisions at our meeting. Please help us to be thoughtful and wise. Thank you for giving us a great community to live in, and please be with us through fall, and help us be kind and loving to one another. In your name we pray, amen.
Item four is the approval of the minutes. Are there any changes from the minutes from the last meeting? None being, it'll stand as presented. Public comment, this is a time in our meeting where we set aside for anyone that would come forward and comment to the commission on any agenda item that is not on the agenda. We give you five minutes, and please state your name when you do come forward. And I know the clerk has a note to read.
Yes, I have a letter from Melissa Gallegos with Downtown Vision. It reads, "Dear Matt Allen and City Commissioners, thank you for taking the time to read this letter during the city commission meeting. I apologize for not being in person to deliver this message. As my son is having a medical procedure done today, I want to take a moment to thank you, to say thank you to all the city departments for all of their work they put into making Fall Fest 2021 a success. From the weeks of preparation and planning to being out on Main Street from 5:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. the day of the event, Garden City Downtown Vision could not have accomplished this feat without their expertise, guidance, and hard work. This community is truly blessed to have such committed individuals to oversee all of the behind-the-scenes work that we take for granted on a daily basis. I want to let each and every one of them know that their hard work is not unseen, but greatly appreciated. Fall Fest was able to operate smoothly because of the many crews that assisted us on Saturday. In closing, I just want to reiterate how grateful I am for their help and just simply say thank you. Thank you to the electric, solid waste, water, parks, street, police, and fire departments for a job well done. Here's to many more successful events in downtown Garden City. Kind regards, Melissa Gallegos, Executive Director, Garden City Downtown Vision."
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, moving on to item number six then.
Item 6A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim September 28th, 2021 as Anka Jukon Day.
Here a motion for this item?
I so move.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Euler, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. I'll sign this. Do you want me to read this? Anka, oh, the proclamation reads, "Whereas Anna Jukon began working for the City of Garden City wastewater treatment plant on August 4th, 1997, and whereas she served the city well as the only laboratory chemist sent the opening of the wastewater treatment plant, and whereas Anna Jukon has maintained a certificate, or a certified environmental laboratory for the use of the city water and wastewater utilities in assistance to numerous public water systems and utilities in the vicinity of Garden City, and whereas Annika Jukon's experience has played a significant role in the protection of the environment and public health for the city of Garden City and the surrounding area, and whereas Anna Jukon has been awarded the Crystal Crucible Award by the Kansas Water Environment Association and the Clifton Mellon Award by the Kansas Laboratory Education Association for her contributions and dedication to her field, and whereas Annika will retire from employment with the City of Garden City on September 30th, 2021 after 24 years of service, and whereas Anna Jukon is regarded as one of the hardest-working and most dedicated and most recognizable public servants in Garden City's history. Now therefore, I Roy Sesna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 28th as Annika Jukon Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for her service to this community, and highly commend her for the manner in which she has carried out her reasonable responsibilities and duties as laboratory chemist for the City of Garden City. Signed and sealed the 21st day of September 2021, Roy Sesna, Mayor. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Sad that you're retiring, but we understand.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your appreciation.
Okay, on three, one, two, three.
Yeah, I don't know who will get any younger. At least like half of me.
Thank you very much, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Anka, we also have a flag.
Amazing.
Mike was pointing out that he also has a flag for you. In appreciation of your 24 years of dedicated service devoted to commitment to the city of Garden City, 1997 to 2021. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Item 6B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve allowing the mayor to proclaim September 30th, 2021 as Melinda Hitt's Day in Garden City, Kansas.
Entertain a motion on this item?
I move that we approve September 30th, 2021 as Melinda Hitt's Day in Garden City.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Melinda Hitt's began working for the City of Garden City as the Director of the Service and Finance Department on April 22nd, 1991, and whereas Melinda Hitt's has assisted city administration and the city commission in the development of responsible annual budgets, annual budgets, and sound financial management policies. And where Melinda Hitt's served as reliable and creative problem-solving resource for many city staff and elected officials during her tenure, and whereas Melinda's experience has played a significant role in the City of Garden City's receiving the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for over 25 years, and whereas Melinda Hitt's was selected as the AI CPA, Outstanding CPA and Governing Impact Award local level in 2014, and whereas Melinda Hitt's was selected as the Local Inductee into the Garden City High School Hall of Fame in 2018, will retire from employment with the City of Garden City on September 30th, 2021 after 30 years of service, and whereas Melinda Hitt's is regarded as one of the brightest, most influential, and most dedicated and most recognizable public servants in Garden City's history. Now therefore, I Roy Sesna, Mayor of the City of Garden City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim September 30th, 2021 as Melinda Hitt's Day in Garden City, Kansas, and urge all citizens to acknowledge and express their sincere appreciation and thanks for her service to this community, and I highly commend her for the manner in which she has carried out her responsibilities and duties as Director of Service and Finance for the City of Garden City. Signed and sealed the 21st day of September 2021, Roy Sesna, Mayor."
That's why you brought him, so they could get, that's why you brought him to get their picture taken, so they might as well get it done.
All right, item 6C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request from Brian Nelson, Garden City High School, to waive the fee for Stevens Park on Sunday, September 26th, 2021, from 4:30 to 7:30 p.m. for a homecoming celebration after the parade. Oh, I'm sorry, we don't have a mayor.
Yeah, note that the mayor's stepped down from this.
Oh, I got you.
Yep. Is anybody?
I don't think Brian's, I didn't see Brian in the crowd, but we've got a few more people here than we normally do.
Is this similar to the requests we've had before?
It is, yeah.
Can I hear a motion for this item?
I'll make a motion that we waive the fee for $100.
All right, you have a motion, you have a second?
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. All right, motion carries, four to zero.
Item 7A, Parks and Recreation Director Erin Stewart will provide an update on the potential new location for a skate park and request Mayor Sesna appoint a member of the city commission to the consultant interview committee. And I think Erin's out of town today, actually prepared this agenda item for you. Mayor Commissioners, I'll read it on his behalf. The request for qualifications is being advertised for the selection of a qualified firm to perform design and building services for the development of a new skate park. Proposals are due October 5th, 2021, and staff are ready to form a committee to review and rank the proposals as to which firm, if any, should be recommended to the governing body to negotiate a professional contract for services related to building a concrete skate park. The committee will consist of department heads, division supervisors, Parks and Recreation employees, a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board member, and the Public Grounds and Tree Board member. A proposal and evaluation sheets will be provided when the committee meets. Really what we're looking for primarily today, Mayor, is you designating which city commissioner would serve on that consultant interview committee.
And I've spoken with Vice Mayor Dick, and he would like to serve on that committee.
Okay, thank you. Item B, Deputy City Manager Cunningham will present the plan for soliciting project and service ideas from the community during the fall of 2021, which will serve as an alternative community engagement activity to accommodate for taking a year off of the formal capital improvement planning process. Jennifer?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This item comes before you as the senior staff has began meeting weekly, and we discuss different topics, and one of the things that we've been discussing is the capital improvement process. Typically, the end of August, we start getting all of the materials ready, and we start getting ready to kick it off in November, soliciting who wants to participate, any project ideas that might be out there, and then we go full steam November through about February, and then we have Commissioner Dick, through his other business, analyze those results and provide them for the goal-setting retreat that you all participate in. I started following CIP when Sam Curran was still here. The last two years that he was here, I followed him around in anticipation that I was taking over the capital improvement process. At the end of that, I got one year in before COVID hit, and so my second full year, which I had high hopes for of getting the college and the school district involved in a student process, fell flat because we, COVID just made us go virtual. We went virtual, and we did a hybrid model where we used Facebook for one forum, and then we used email for people who didn't use social media, and it worked okay. We had 30, as you saw in my memo, we had 37 people participate, which is a high number of people who actually signed up to participate. However, the participation is just different overall than you get in an actual sit-down setting. When you serve dinner and you have people come on Thursday nights, they come every Thursday night, they show up, they listen, they participate, they ask questions, and they respond to the survey. When we did the virtual portion, although we had 37 participants, we didn't have 37 people respond to the survey. We didn't have 37 people who watched all of the videos, who gave all the data. And when we got to the end, it was also difficult because when we did it in person, we had a numbering system, we had a lot of things in place in order to track that we didn't have just two people vote on the projects they liked and nothing else. And those things were much more difficult when you use like Survey Monkey, which is what we used for the virtual sessions. So as we approached this year, in trying to decide what was the best method in order to put on the capital improvement process, senior staff went through a lot of things. Do we develop two processes, a virtual process and an in-person process? So that if at some point we're not able to do in-person, could we go to virtual? And that's a ton of work. The Communications Department has to create a video for every single department that has projects and put those together, and then have them ready for presentation. We also cut the projects back when we did the virtual session. We cut it back to two years rather than the five years, and so obviously, long-range planning becomes more difficult. And then the last piece of that that became problematic is just kind of the back and forth of it. What do we do, which one do we choose? And then Matt brought up a really great point to our team, which was, how many projects have been, project ideas have been given by the community to you all? And how many sheets did you receive back? And the number was astonishing. The number of ones we received back that actually had a project on it was one. And so what we decided was that more effort needed to be put in to figure out, what does the community want from us? What projects do they want to see us do? And so in brainstorming, what does this look like? Our thought process was, we had already committed to work with the JAG class at the high school to present the CIP process and to have them vote on projects. So my thought process is, we would still continue with that so long as they're in school. And then on the flip side, we would really engage and work diligently to solicit ideas and kind of revamp the capital improvement process with those new project ideas. Mike was talking about doing an analysis of all the roads, and just looking at everything that we've maybe missed in the last couple of years or the things that we haven't gotten from solicitation of the community because that hasn't been our focus. Our focus has been the process, the planning, the projects that were already in there, instead of, where are we now, what do we need? And so that's kind of where this memo comes from, and just want you all to know that we believe that the capital improvement planning process is super important. We understand that it's crucial to your decision-making when it comes to budgeting, and we have every intention of going back with a full-blown capital improvement process, but we hope that it will include a lot of input. We also hope to include the input that was received through the comprehensive plan, and also the input that was given, or will be given, through the master plan that's being done on Parks and Rec. So I think there will be a lot of good information that comes out of that, and this will give staff the opportunity to dive into that and really give you something meaningful with all of that information. Questions, concerns?
Yeah, well, I only had a question, so I know that you mean, I know you did a robust, I mean, the way you handled the Garden Rapids of the Big Bowl was incredible. So I know that was a very robust project, but it seemed like a lot of the response would be fell just upon you, and I'm curious about, are there others that you're going to be engaged in, either in the city or in our organization or other organizations that might help generate more of those responses and feedbacks and comments rather than, you know, you doing all of that work?
Yeah, sure, so actually, in order to get to this, the senior management team, Mike and Aaron, Trent, Melinda, we, like I said, we started this weekly meeting that we do at 8:30 to 10 o'clock, and it's really given us a time to talk about this. Mike has spent a significant amount of time coming up with ideas how we can generate more responses, and in addition to that, I think that there are other people in the organization who are willing to help us do this and achieve the end results, and I don't think that anybody, as part of this discussion, has thought that it would fall on my shoulders or I would be solely responsible, so.
Yeah, my only other comment, I have a lot of people who tell me they receive the mailers and their bills, and then they'll tell you, oh, here's my idea. And I said, well, did you write it down or send it in? So getting it from their mouth onto paper and then to you, I think that's the, I mean, hopefully that's something we can figure out because I think the community has a lot of really great ideas, but again, I think how they fill it out are, you know, that really, it does make a difference, so.
And I think what you're gonna find, we're gonna have a pre-meeting about this here in the next couple of weeks, but the communication survey that went out, we received close to 500 responses from that. And so although it may have not seemed like it was out there getting, and so really just using that and that intentional focus of, what is it that we're trying to achieve? Instead of asking you six questions, which includes your first name, your last name, your age, and whether or not you want to participate, like, let's eliminate all of the things that you don't want to write down, and let's focus on the one thing that we want you to write down and that we hope to get out of this, which is, what do you want us to do? And then if they only have to write that, maybe we'll get more of those, and then finding some other avenues to solicit that information.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Item 7C, we're proud to report that the city's insurance service office, or ISO rating for our fire protection service area is a two, and the fire department service is a four. These are both excellent ratings that benefit the community and the property immediately surrounding Garden City. Well done, Garden City Fire Department.
Good job.
Item D through F are department reports. If you have questions on those, we'd be happy to try to answer them.
Any questions? Not a lot of dates, meaning to, I see.
Those that require RSBP, please get those to sue in. And then I think if there aren't any questions on those meetings in note, we are ready for item 9A. If that's consideration of the appropriation ordinance approved, it would be appropriation of ordinance number 2539-2021A.
Entertain a motion on this item?
I move to approve ordinance number 2539-2021.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second, any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Okay, these next two items work in conjunction with each other. The first one's an ordinance, the second one's a resolution. The first one, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the following ordinance regarding the city's taxable general obligation bonds, Series A 2021 and Series B 2021. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2911-2021. Melinda?
Back on July 20th of 2021, the city commission, at the city commission meeting, the governing body authorized the following projects. That is the airport terminal improvements, improvements to Southeast Community Park, improvements to Fenup Scout Park, and Fulton Street Storm Sewer. I have Brett Shogren here today, and he's going to present you the bids that were received at 10 o'clock this morning, and he's also going to be discussing Moody's credit report.
Welcome.
Thank you, Melinda, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Brett Shogren with Stiefel Nicholas and Company in Wichita, your financial advisor. We've got some really good results for you today.
Good.
As Melinda said at previous meetings, you adopted resolution authorizing various projects and the offering for sale of $8 million in taxable general obligation bonds, Series A 2021, and $3,035,000 in, $3,035,000 in tax-exempt general obligation bond, Series B 2021. We worked with your staff and developed a preliminary official statement and submitted it along with your most recent audits to Moody's Investor Service for an underlying credit rating. We, as we always do, have a conference call with the Moody's analysts, as well as Matt, Melinda, and Mike, and they always do an outstanding job representing your city. The Moody's really likes Garden City. They came back and reaffirmed the city's AA3 credit rating, which is an excellent rating. They cited the city's trend of positive financial operations and growing operating reserves, coupled with the city's moderately-sized and growing tax base that serves as economic center to its largely agricultural surroundings. I believe in your packet, you have a copy of that report. Just to hit some high points in there, they estimated that the city's tax base is likely to continue to experience growth due to ongoing residential and commercial development. Your preliminary 2021 valuation showed a 3.7% increase, and they think with those new developments, it'll continue to grow. Also reflects the city's affordable housing, equal to about 68.6% of the national average, and a low unemployment rate of 3.1% compared to, compared favorably to the state's 4.4% and the nation's 6.1%. They also noted that the reserves are considered healthy and expected to stay strong with the city's conservative budgeting practices. They reported a healthy reserve of 47.3% of operating revenue. They really like reserves, and you guys are doing a great job with your reserves. So that's just a little bit of color on the Moody's report. This morning at 10:00 a.m., we opened the bids for both bond issues. We received six bids on the taxable bonds and nine bids on the tax-exempt bonds. That's almost a record, I think, one time we had 10 bids.
Right.
That is almost a record. I had Sealan before the meeting pass around this bid tab. It's a little hard to read because you've got so many bids, but that's a good thing. I'm not going to go through all these one by one, but the top one is the taxable Series A 2021. We received six bids, the best bid was from Country Club Bank at a true interest cost on the 15-year taxable bonds of 1.713804%. The tax-exempt bonds, the $3,035,000, we got nine bids. Best bid was from Stevens Incorporated at Little Rock at 10-year tax-exempt bonds, true interest cost of .884127%.
Wow, that's insane.
Less than 1%, I think that's a record. I think that is the lowest interest rate possibly you've ever had. So we have, those are great results. Also wanted to mention that with the taxable bonds with Country Club Bank, I wanted to point out that Western State Bank was a participant in that issue and purchased some of the taxable bonds. So I wanted to let you know that you had some participation from a local bank, and that's always encouraged. The taxable bonds are being issued to provide roughly 25% of funds to construct a new terminal-related facilities at your airport, and will be amortized over 15 years. The tax-exempt bonds are being issued to make improvements to Southeast Community Park, Fenup Scout Park, and to Fulton Street, and those bonds are amortized over 10 years. Both bids consider, had what we call bid premiums associated with them. Basically means that since interest rates are so low, buyers of the bonds don't want to buy .2% bonds. They'll pay more than face value for those bonds in exchange for a higher rate of interest. And they pay more than face value, so you can either capture some of that premium and use it as a contingency, or you can downsize the issue. you can downsize the issue and pay, you know, in exchange for that higher premium or a higher interest rate, you can issue fewer bonds and offset it that way. We did something a little bit in between. We downsized the taxable issue by about two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars in order to hit Melinda's payment target of six-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand dollars a year, and we kept the rest of the premium as a contingency. And as the project fund for the taxable airport bond issue, we were able to put eight million three-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand dollars in round numbers into the project fund and three million one-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars in round numbers to the park project fund. So we're paying less interest as well as have a little bit extra money for contingencies in case of cost overruns or even enhance the project a little bit if you'd like to. We are extremely pleased with these results of these two transactions. Hope you are as well. We really value our long relationship with the city. I think, I think our banking team through a couple firms, as some acquisitions happened, I think our team has worked with the city for over thirty years, and we really value that relationship and really appreciate your business. Also like to congratulate Melinda. Melinda's been great to work with. She's been a part of that team for a long time, most of that time, and really want to congratulate. She's been great to work with. You had a really good asset with Melinda on your team, so. With approval of the bond resolution and bond ordinance, we'll order the bonds printed. We'll submit the transcript to the attorney general's office for approval, and this issue is scheduled to close, or these issues are scheduled to close on October twelfth. That's when the money will change hands, and you'll have money for your projects. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this ordinance, twenty-nine eleven dash twenty-twenty-one.
I move to approve ordinance number twenty-nine eleven dash twenty-twenty-one.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item ten B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the following resolution regarding the city's taxable general obligation bonds, Series A twenty-twenty-one and Series B twenty-twenty-one. If approved, it would be resolution number twenty-eight eighty-nine dash twenty-twenty-one.
The city has adopted ordinance number twenty-nine eleven dash twenty-twenty-one, authorizing the issuance of the city's general obligation bond, Series A and B twenty-twenty-one, for the purpose of providing funds to pay for the costs of the improvements described and defined in the bond ordinance. The bond ordinance provides that the resolution be adopted by the governing body of the city to set forth the details and conditions and to make the covenants with respect to the bonds. So you have alternatives to approve or defer. Staff recommends that this be adopted, and there's no fiscal loan.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item.
I move to approve resolution number twenty-eight eighty-nine dash twenty-twenty-one.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item ten C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the standard traffic ordinance for twenty-twenty-one. If approved, it would be ordinance number twenty-nine twelve dash twenty-twenty-one. Jimmy?
Thank you, Matt. Mayor Commissioners, good afternoon. It is that time of year where we are adopting the standard traffic ordinance and the Uniform Public Offense Code that is published annually by the League of Kansas Municipalities. So for each year, there are some amendments that have been made to keep the code consistent with state statute. Then, of course, there are some changes that we try to incorporate locally, and then every year, sometimes we find language that needs to be modified, maybe to make it more clear or to address issues that might come up in municipal court that we feel need to be changed. So this year primarily, a lot of the changes are to the S T O. It's really more technical than the U P O C, so that's why you'll see a long, a larger memo, and I've tried to lay out a lot of those changes. I see some of the amended sections. Really, they're very technical changes. These are all consistent with state statute changes. For instance, one of them, which I think that might be more substantial, is in section thirty-one, the fleeing or attempting to elude a police officer. The mental state that's required for the city to prove in a trial has been, it's been taken from intentionally to a knowingly standard, so that has been changed. And that would, that's essentially summing up some of the sections that have just been amended to be consistent with state statute. I would like to draw your attention to the section regarding failure to comply with traffic citations. Now, this is part of a statute that makes it a misdemeanor to not handle your, your traffic case. There are some consequences that apply if you fail to do that. Mainly, your license gets suspended, and then you are assessed a reinstatement fee by the court, and once your license is suspended, the only way that you can get that reinstated is by paying that reinstatement fee and then also taking care of your ticket in the municipal court. So those are really the consequences of it, and what the state of Kansas has done a couple of years ago, if you can recall, they added a provision for a waiver. It's called a, I think it's a manifest hardship waiver, where you can ask the court to waive that reinstatement fee because they found, some people are facing some insurmountable fees and costs associated with trying to get their license fixed, because some of these might have added up over the years, and so they added that. So this last year, the legislature kind of expanded on that, and they allowed that waiver to apply to fees and court costs. However, when they did that, the language that has been chosen could leave a lot of things up to interpretation. There's not a lot of limits placed on that. So in order to prevent it from being applied more generally, for instance, to people who maybe don't have any license suspension issues, but simply are municipal court found guilty of a traffic violation and owe the court costs, fines and court costs, we have amended that language to make it, to add some of those limits on there. So what it looks like now is that a person can apply for a manifest hardship waiver if they, if they have, one, failed to comply with the traffic citation, and two, they've been assessed a reinstatement fee, and then they've been assessed fines and court costs. And so the person is able to ask the municipal court to waive that, and then it's up to the municipal court's discretion and whether to approve that or not. So that is one of the more substantial changes. Also, I would like to point your attention to the sections regarding scooters. A lot of this has been, has come up with the bird scooters operating in Garden City. One thing that we've found is currently, those are not allowed to be operated on sidewalks. After consultation with city managers, while as the police department and other departments, we feel that it is appropriate for those to be driven on sidewalks. It's certainly probably safer in some respects. Now, it's a little bit interesting in some of the distinctions between what is a vehicle and what is not a vehicle. A lot of that is caused because these kind of low-speed devices, they're constantly changing in the block, and this situation hasn't really caught up with that. So what you'll find changes relating to these types of devices is, one, there is a definition of electric personal assisted mobility devices, which, that is a Segway.
Right.
Segway has been able to exempt themselves from the definition motor vehicle for some time. What the proposed ordinance does is it keeps that definition, but it also adds a definition for a similar device, which some of you may be familiar with, which is called a one-wheel. So that, the proposed ordinance would exempt all of those from the definition of vehicle, so essentially, most of the standard traffic ordinance would not apply to those devices. Now, electric assisted scooters is a kind of completely different device. Rather than exempting them from the definition of a vehicle, we thought it would be important to still regulate those devices, but allow them to operate on the sidewalk. So the section one sixteen, driving on sidewalks, there's, there's a new subsection that specifically exempts electric assisted scooters from the prohibition from riding on the sidewalk. And you'll also find in the section one thirty-five point one, there are several regulations that have been put into place regarding the operation of scooters, primarily when they're operating on a road, what the rules of the road are. Also, when operating on a sidewalk, try to, the rules and regulations that are, that are changed in one thirty-five point one are designed to protect other pedestrians. So that is the main point of that, and I think that this is consistent with the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration's definition of a vehicle. They, they basically say that everything under twenty, like, these electric devices that are, you know, primarily used by kids are, are not motor vehicles, because they're, one, typically not designed to be used on a road or highway, and two, that they have a maximum speed, or they're supposed to be operating at a speed of under twenty miles per hour. So all of this, we feel is consistent, and we feel that it mirrors more of the actual usage of these devices, so we're just trying to catch up with how this is being used in our community. Does anyone have any, well, first of all, so that, essentially, that sums up the majority of the changes. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that?
Lots of questions.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, I, I get the ordinance or the laws and things, but what about city ordinances? Can those be put into place if someone asked, you know, strictly business street down on Main Street or something, could they actually, you know, pull to not have scooters on their sidewalks, or is that even acceptable? I mean, what I, what I'm, I guess what I'm getting at is, Main Street is a pretty pedestrian, you know, walkway for businesses and customers to be walking into, and then you got these bird scooters that are flying down. Yeah, they're twelve miles an hour, but that's, that's still pretty fast for an elderly person coming out of a store. Is it, one, an issue where we could see an ordinance put in place by the city or something not to have those on those streets?
Well, Commissioner, certainly nothing would prevent the city from passing an ordinance to that effect, this, this further regulating the use on sidewalks and possibly business districts or, or in any areas in particular, and that would, that would be up to, to the commission.
Okay.
The current ordinance does not have any such prohibition right now.
Well, and I think that, you know, we've really not done anything as far as an informational campaign and helping people understand that pedestrians still have the ultimate right-of-way. And I know that a couple of people I talked to who have been crashed into, I mean, no one's gotten hurt, but I mean, who is ultimately responsible? The person driving it or the person who owns the scooter? And so if there were medical bills or something like that involved, you know, I don't know what that, what that looks like, because generally, you don't purchase liability insurance when you ride the scooter. So, I mean, I think some of those, doing an informational campaign, helping people understand, you know, that there are consequences, but I don't know if those, if there are consequences to that, Jimmy, or not, so.
I mean, well, that would be...
Would that be in the app?
I don't remember. I don't remember the live, I can't remember, you might sign off on it, but I can't remember. I haven't used it in so long.
Right, that, that would be a civil question between the parties that are involved. The city would just be trying to create an environment where the operation on the sidewalks are generally safe, and I think you're correct, Commissioner, with the information campaign, people would at least be on notice that if they are operating scooters on sidewalks in more of a wanton disregard for, you know, people or property, then they could be subject to receiving that ticket in municipal court.
There's been a couple of things downtown where people have been riding, where there's been so many people, and, you know, it just, and they're riding them on the sidewalks, and that didn't make sense, but, I mean, I agree. In the streets, it's actually more dangerous, because they're harder to see, and, you know, there's really not much light. I've seen, you know, I've seen people riding those later at night, and it's, there are very little lighting on them, so it's, yeah, anything we can do to keep them and everyone else safe, I think is important, so.
Yes, Commissioner, and also, this is a, you know, this is new territory, so if, I, I know that the police department, Chief Pruitt, are going to be paying close attention to it, so if there are some changes that are recommended by, you know, city staff, then we can certainly take a, take a look at that to modify it. We feel it's a good starting point, though. I agree.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on ordinance twenty-nine twelve, then?
I move to approve ordinance twenty-nine twenty, twenty-nine twelve dash twenty-twenty-one.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. Any other discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Item D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the Uniform Public Offense Code for twenty-twenty-one. If approved, it would be ordinance number twenty-nine thirteen dash twenty-twenty-one. Jimmy?
Thank you, good, Matt, and Mayor Commissioners, good afternoon, again. The Uniform Public Offense Code, same situation as the standard traffic ordinance, as I stated previously. It's much less technical than the standard traffic ordinance, so there are not a lot of changes. Any changes that are proposed would be in relation to updates to state statutes that are, that we try to mirror in our code. And there are, a lot of the changes this year that the League of Kansas Municipalities made did deal with some of the sections that the governing body has previously omitted, such as those applying to watercraft, things like that, that just simply do not apply in our jurisdiction. So that's why you don't see a lot of changes this year. Some of them that I wanted to draw your attention to were included in the memo, particularly with the public offensive sexual battery. There previously was a spousal exception to that, and that was just carried over from state law. State law has removed that, and so to be consistent with that, it has been removed as well. There is a new offense for criminal trespass at a critical infrastructure facility, such as electrical substations and the properties surrounding that. So it's an expansion of the general criminal trespass statute. After consultation with the police department, I thought that was a good section to include locally, and so that's why it has been included in the proposed, the proposed ordinance.
Any questions for Jimmy? Entertain a motion on ordinance twenty-nine thirteen dash twenty-twenty-one.
I move to approve ordinance number twenty-nine thirteen dash twenty-twenty-one.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twelve A, the governing body is asked to consider and approve applying to the Kansas Department of Transportation's Fall Twenty-Twenty-One Cost Share Program. Mike?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. The KDOT share program provides financial assistance to local entities for transportation projects that improve safety, support, job retention and growth, improve access or mobility, relieve congestion and help barriers across the state to improve the transportation system. The cost share program is one of KDOT's most flexible funding opportunities for communities to use. It allows communities to apply for assistance with a wide range of highway, local road, bridge, rail, airport, bicycle, pedestrian, and public transit projects, as long as they can provide at least fifteen percent local cash match of that project. KDOT funds are used exclusively to match construction costs for these projects. So staff has identified a significant pedestrian sidewalk pathway extension that covers, goes basically from East Tally Trail by the Tangium Complex, connecting to new and existing sidewalks on Spru Street farther east of Jenny Barker Road, sections of Jenny Barker Road north all the way to Mary Street, Mary Street east to the edge of that subdivision. Also includes a new sidewalk that interconnects everything in front of Walmart. And then as part of this project, it also requires a pedestrian, at-grade pedestrian crossing at Spru Street and the bypass, where the traffic signal is there now. Significant expansion, and I'll get up here in a second with this little, Sealan told me to make sure I use this.
He's gonna be a little crooning, huh?
I just can't quite reach that high, man. Anyway, this little section right here should be red. If I put in the wrong map, that, this, all of the red is what's being proposed in this particular application. Should, you approve it, and should it be approved by KDOT, it would actually would complete a loop completely around the east side of the community, and it also connects the southeast park that's under construction at this time, so be a significant improvement to that whole area. I do want to point out that, let me put this back. So if the commission would vote to do this, the KDOT's portion would be one million dollars maximum, and then we would be, the city would be required to pay everything over that amount. KDOT, they only have like nine million dollars or ten million dollars to commit to this program, but we felt that it's significant, and it improves pedestrian safety immensely in our area. Therefore, that's why we thought it would be good to put everything together. I do want to point out, there's an error in my math in the total cost share. I put the total cost of segment one, two, and alternate three at two million eight-hundred-and-eighty-nine I put the total cost of segment one, two, and alternate three at two million eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and four hundred forty-four thousand. That number should be two million eight hundred eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-nine. I honestly don't know where I made the error, but somehow those don't total it the way it should have. So the city's portion, should you choose to move forward, would be one million eight hundred eleven dollars, one million eight hundred eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. If you choose to do this, then we have to submit our application by this Friday, September twenty-fourth. We didn't give a whole lot of time. Your alternatives would be direct staff to complete this particular application for the 2021 Cost Share Program in the amount of two million eight hundred eleven thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Direct staff to look at different segments of this particular plan, or direct staff not to participate in the program at all, and of course, we wouldn't do that. And we recommend alternative one. Should KDOT choose to fund that, it would be an opportunity to get one million dollars to go towards those pedestrian improvements. And should you choose to tell us to go forward, the funding for this would have to come out of a 2022 general obligation bond. That would be for public improvements. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. There's a ton of pictures that go with the application that shows where this would go.
Really told the stories.
And really, Adam, with Wilson Engineering, he's, he gets all the credit. He's the one that went out, took all the pictures and did ninety-nine percent of the work, so. Very big, very big program. We're asking if you guys want to support that this year.
So Mike, do, now, do they, when they fund this, can they fund a portion of it, or do they automatically, they fund at the million dollar level? Or they'll, they can fund all or part of it? Is that correct?
Yes, they could come back and say, we, we'll, we'll pay for this segment of the program, or we'll give you a hundred thousand dollars and you can do it where you want.
And then we get to choose, so.
Or they could, or, yeah, or they could do it all. It's really kind of up to them.
Mike, segment three, for which there are three alternatives you proposed, is really the part that connects Chapel Heights along Mary Street, going back to the Jenny Barker Road K-156 and Mary Street intersection generally. I guess it's a little bit south of that, but could you go through and kind of describe what the material difference is between option? Are they lettered A, B, and C, or one, yeah, they'd be, so, segment three, options A, B, and C?
On the, is there, can you pull up the, the map that shows the three different options? That, that one will work, man.
Do I need to zoom it in?
You can, if you'd like to. So, one of the options is to just continue with the trail, with the sidewalk that comes right down Mary Street and ties into Jenny Barker Road.
So is that, can you identify if it's A, B, or C?
That's option A.
Okay.
Option B would be to have this come down here and then come up here to the intersection. And then option C would be to cross over this way and come all the way down, tie in there and come down to here. So, we, we, we looked at that. We thought, well, perhaps pedestrians, once the Walmart extension is done, people may just want to cross up here, cross over there and be done instead of kind of walking around. But at the same time, if we didn't put it in, they would come down here, and if, then they'd have to cross and go back up and cross again. So we tried to eliminate as many crossings as, as a pedestrian would have to do trying to get over to that Walmart area, if you would. We, we planned everything as concrete, so the price could be a little bit less if we ended up with asphalt, but we felt that concrete would probably be a little bit stronger, last a little bit longer. There'll be a pedestrian bridge that goes across the drainage ditch here, DD two, is that what that is? Right next to the roadway. The city's already obligated to pay to extend this sidewalk from here all the way up. That's part of the development agreement in, with Chapel Heights. They'll also be, with this next phase of Chapel Heights, this sidewalk actually extends all the way down, further down to here, so. A lot of information and a short time to decide if you want us to apply for that or not.
And so everything's ready? You've got everything ready? You apply for it, it's just the okay?
Entertained a motion on this item, then?
I move that direct staff to complete the KDOT 2021 Cost Share Program application for the combined segments, including Alt three dash C, the amount of, and is the new amount two million eight hundred eleven thousand five thirty-nine? Is that correct, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Item twelve B, the governing body is asked to consider and approve SWT Design to perform architectural and landscape architectural services for the Phase Three design of Southeast Park. Aaron's gone today, so I'll present this item. The city advertised for and received six qualification statements or proposals on June twenty-ninth, 2021, to be considered for architectural and landscape architectural design services for Southeast Park Phase Three and beyond. The intention is to complete the final design of the park, including all buildings, structures and landscaping, that would be completed in the third phase. Depending on cost, Phase Three may be split into two phases. The committee that reviewed written proposals and completed video interviews with firms consisted of Deb Euler, City Commissioner, Eric Schaefer, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Jonathan Aguirre, Public Grounds and Tree Board, Aaron Stewart, Parks and Recreation Director, Preston Martin, interim Parks Superintendent, Jared Rudy, Recreation Superintendent, Jessica Wyckoff, Finance Coordinator, Adam Shart, City Engineer. After review, the written information provided, three firms, after review of the written information provided, three firms were selected to advance to the video interviews. The committee interviewed these firms on September second. They were SWT Design, WDM Architects, and PEC. After deliberation, the committee determined that the firm SWT Design would be recommended to complete this portion of the services requested in the RFQ. Therefore, the committee is requesting authorization to begin contract negotiations with SWT Design and define the expected deliverables, timeframe, and expense. If approval is given, then a contract will be created and brought back to the governing body for consideration at a subsequent meeting. Your alternatives are to authorize the selection of SWT Design or to not authorize the selection of SWT Design. Staff recommends alternative one.
Any questions? Entertained a motion on this item.
I move, I move to authorize the selection of SWT Design and negotiate a contract for completing architectural and landscape architectural services for Southeast Park Phase Three.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second. Is there any discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passes.
Item C, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request for proposals for contract prosecution services. Jennifer?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. This is something that we talked about at your pre-meeting here two meetings ago. This is what we've been doing for prosecution services for the last two years. The first RFP came before you in 2019 to be filled for the first year of 2020. If you read in the memo, you see that in 2020, we did not have a lot of good data for how successful it was, whether or not we were doing victim notification, how well, you know, attorneys were communicating with our contract prosecutor, stuff like that. So, 2020 was just kind of a wash, honestly. We had court maybe about three of the twelve months that were available in 2020. So 2021 has been a much better data set for that. And so what is before you today is the RFP process for the prosecution services. And what will happen, excuse me, what will happen is David, who is currently our contract prosecutor, he has been emailed and also sent by certified return receipt his termination of his contract, which ends on December thirty-first of 2021, and also invited to reapply for this RFP that would extend that contract into 2022. This is also an opportunity, as I discussed with Commissioner Euler, this is an opportunity, if you know someone who's been complaining, that thinks that they would like to throw their hat in the ring for this, this is their opportunity to do that. And essentially what will happen is, as you'll see in the memo, all of the requests for proposal responses will come to Matt here at the City Administration Building, and then he'll assemble a committee that will do the interview process and select a recommendation that will then come to all of you for a final decision. The RFP process is the same as it was previously. The requirements are the same. Some of them were highlighted just because I think that they're important to note, especially for those that are applying, such as you have to have a staff person available to take phone calls from attorneys and take phone calls from victims and things of that nature. You also are required to do all the victim notices, and you're also required to provide discovery to all defense counsel, which does make this twenty-five hours a week of work that you have to do. So, that's important to note for this particular RFP. Additionally, I think that was all of the things I wanted to make sure that we, that we hit on. So essentially, oh, and the last thing that I put in there was that, just a reminder to everyone, as you saw in the numbers that were shown at the pre-meeting, the two hundred thousand dollar contract is less than budgeted previously for the entire prosecution budget for municipal court. So, we are staying under that, and that's been, that number was the same in 2020 and also in 2021. We have not changed that number. It, it does remain the same in the RFP. So, I'll take any questions that you have. This process will not open until October first, and it will close on October twelfth. So, not a very long window, but obviously this is not super complicated either.
Any questions? Entertained a motion on this item.
Yeah, I move that we approve the RFP for prosecution services.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
I did want to say how much I appreciated the pre-meeting because it really brought to light the value that this has been over the past several years. So I did want to say thank you.
Item twelve D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request for proposals for a mural for the Municipal Court and Evidence Building. Stewart?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. So this is a follow-up to something we talked about at that same pre-meeting on September seventh, a, a RFP for a mural on the north wall of the old Telegram building, Municipal Court and Evidence Building. So this is just that RFP with the details discussed. So a few of the main details I want to point out is staff decided that a maximum of fifteen thousand dollars was sort of an ideal amount. So a reminder that that can go down based on the cost of the project, that's sort of the maximum we're putting out there. A few of the sort of directives we put out to applicants to sort of fit the goals stated by the commission. We want something that is going to be a celebration of our city and what makes it unique, sort of a fixture that enhances the character of downtown and a destination that people from both within and without Finney County would come to and take photographs with, enjoy, things like that. Though we've also stated that the mural can be picked on basis, on a basis of, you know, those goals, cost, design, so that will give flexibility. The RFP states that applicants are going to be narrowed down by a committee, but the final decision will come to you all once that happens. Sort of the last, I think, bit of important information here is the timeline that staff has recommended. So that is going to be, submissions would open, if you all approve the RFP, they would open today. The applications would be due by five PM on Thursday, October seventh, 2021. Committee will review applications and send the recommendations to you all for the October nineteenth commission meeting, and then you all would vote on the final chosen design on that meeting on the nineteenth. So if you have any more questions, I'm happy to answer them, but those are the details.
So will they be submitting their actual concept before the approval?
Yes.
Okay.
So they'll have sort of a, they'll have a design. It doesn't have to be completely final, we can negotiate that with them, but some sort of sketch design. They also will submit a concept narrative where they'll sort of describe what's special about their design, how it fits in with their goals, things like that.
Okay.
So, so, does this kind of match the same thing they did with the corner on Eighth Street, the timeline? Does it match that kind of, that period of time? Because I know they had, people expected a lot more submissions, and then they, they didn't really receive that many. So I'm curious if, if this matches that same art project that we just approved over on Eighth Street on the corner, do you remember?
I'm not quite certain about that.
Because I know that was ran by, was it Downtown Vision?
Downtown, and then it got handed off to Arts.
Arts. Was it about the same timeframe?
I think so. I think there'll probably be a little bit more interest in a mural. There's a little bit more people out there that can handle that project rather than a sculpture.
Any other questions? Entertained a motion on this item, then? I'll make a motion to approve the RFP for the mural for the Municipal Court, Evans Building. Is there a second?
A second.
Commissioner Enruu made the second. Is there any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Item twelve E, the governing body is asked to consider and approve angle parking on the east side of Seventh Street between East Laurel Street and East Chestnut Street. Mike?
Good afternoon again. The, with the plan about the Municipal Court and Evidence Building, same, same street, with the plan, with this being opened up later this fall, at the end of the year, additional parking spaces will most likely be needed. The owners of the McAllister Building requested that the Traffic Advisory Board consider changing the existing parallel parking along the east side of Seventh Street between East Laurel and East Chestnut Street to angle parking to create more additional parking spaces. The Tac, Traffic Advisory Board directed staff to talk to the, all the people involved. The main one would be the First Christian Church, whose main interest is off of Seventh Street, to see if they were in favor or not of this change. The Public Works Operation Manager, Tyler Patterson, spoke with the church, and they were in favor of this. They thought it made pretty good sense for them. They do have two, they have one in the middle at the main door, a handicap ramp. They want to make sure that that gets painted and covered properly, which it would, should you approve that. And then if, that, they come back to the Traffic Advisory Board, they recommended approvals to bring it to you for consideration. So, staff rec, we have two alternatives, is approve the change from parallel parking to angle parking, or do not approve that change. And if, we, we recommend you approve it, staff does, and if you agreed to do that, it would come out of the street's maintenance budget, which currently has a balance of fifty-nine thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. And we would need to do that before the weather would change too bad so that the paint still sticks. And then also on Chestnut Street, on the north side of the new, the old Telegram building, that'll be restripped as well as angle parking. So, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Make sense. Entertained a motion on this item.
I move to approve the change from parallel parking to angle parking as recommended by the Traffic Advisory Board.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second. By Commissioner Dick. Any discussion on this item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to be stepping down on this item.
Item twelve F, the governing body is asked to consider and approve a request to upgrade the pedestrian crosswalk on Fleming Street next to Kenneth Henderson Middle School. Mike?
Yes, as a member of the local police advisory board, Kendra Peterson sent a letter dated August twenty-first, 2021, to the governing body members requesting consideration of upgrading the pedestrian crossing on Fleming Street by the Kenneth Henderson Middle School. Her request was to have additional yellow flashing warning lights and signage added to the existing pedestrian crossing. This request was sent to the Traffic Advisory Board for consideration. Kendra presented her request to this board on September second, 2021, outlining the safety concerns that she had for the students and other pedestrians who use this crosswalk at that location. The Traffic Advisory Board and staff agreed with her recommendations that that particular crossing needed to be improved. Staff advised the Traffic Advisory Board that installing the necessary equipment would cost approximately seventy-five hundred dollars and would take around six to eight weeks to receive the equipment and have it installed. The Traffic Advisory Board suggested that the city and the USD four-five-seven work together to pay for this installation. So your alternatives would be to direct staff to order the necessary materials and install the enhanced pedestrian crossing warning devices or do not authorize them improvements. We recommend alternative one, and the funding would come from the street department's line item maintenance for traffic signals. Currently has a balance of fifty-nine thousand six hundred sixty-eight dollars and seventy-nine cents. And USD four-five-seven has offered to reimburse the se-
And USD 457 has offered to reimburse the city for half of the estimated $7,500 cost for the equipment and the installation. The city crews will also make an ADA ramp on that particular curb that currently is not existing, and that's not part of that cost. And I'm happy to answer any questions we may have.
Yeah, I know, currently this, this crosswalk really is not very, it's just not very usable. I mean, even during when school starts, that's a really hard place to cross the street from anywhere. So, I mean, any improvement we can do, and I think also just alerting people, you know, the flashing lights have really helped people on the tally trail, and people comment all the time, you know, how effective they are, so I think this is a really good idea. And with that, I want to, I'll go ahead and go ahead and direct staff to order the, a motion to direct staff to order the necessary materials and install the enhanced pedestrian crossing warning devices.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. 12H, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an, oh, I'm sorry, 12G. The governing body is asked to consider and approve an additional distribution of community grant funds as recommended by the Community Health Advisory Board. Jennifer?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I realize after looking at this memo with Matt that it was slightly confusing, and it wasn't meant to be, but we wanted you to have the entire history because this is our third allotment of grant funds for the community grant. And so we felt like it was really important that you see that and you see what's left and fully be able to understand. So Matt, if you keep scrolling down, you will see that we have dispersed several times, and we are into, like I said, the third allotment, and this was to, a request to Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center. They are attempting to do what they call a casino night, which is similar to something that they do in Colby that raises a significant number of funds. If you looked at their grant form, I believe it raises in excess of $50,000, which is huge for them. Most of the funds that Community, or that Western Kansas, Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center receives are grant funds that can only go towards salary or towards something related to the employees that work there. They're not allowed to use it towards any sort of fundraising or any sort of other items. And so the biggest issue of this casino night is them raising the funds for the casino company, which is about $10,000, which is the request that they made to the Community Health Advisory Board. There was good discussion amongst the group. They started out with a motion to fund the entire $10,000. That got drawn back to $3,000, and the board did collectively agree and vote that they wanted to award the $3,000 to the Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center. Leila Momgard, who represented the organization at the Community Health Advisory Board, is here today to answer any questions that you might have, but the board does recommend that you grant her those funds. It does leave over $15,000 in the account if there were something else to come up from another agency between now and the end of the year. If not, those funds will be rolled over for grants received this year to be applied in 2022.
Any questions? Entertain a motion on this item. I'll make the motion to approve the recommendations to award $3,000 for the community grant funds to the Western Kansas Child Advocacy Center. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Ortiz. Any questions?
What was the justification for reducing it down from $10,000 to $3,000?
So the discussion was, there was some concern from at least one board member who said, if we reduce, if we give the full $10,000, then we're only leaving ourselves a small portion if there's an emergency from some agency, such as one of the examples that was brought up. If you all recall, I believe it was two years ago, community daycare was out of a water heater for more than six weeks. And so that was considered an emergency. We had a bunch of kids who had cold water. So one of the things that one of the board members brought up was, I don't want to be in a situation where if we had one or more agencies who was facing crisis, we couldn't help them solve that issue. I think it was more of a, these are newer board members, board members who haven't participated much, and so they're just kind of getting their feet underneath them with what they feel like is an appropriate amount to give. And Leila was there and did say that although they were asking for $10,000, that any amount that the Community Health Advisory Board recommended to award to them, they would be happy to receive. And I think that was just the comfort level of a couple of the board members, and that ended up swaying the rest of them.
Well, and I think too, this idea of helping an organization fundraise, I mean, it's a new concept for the Community Health Advisory Board.
It is.
It's outside the purview of what they're, really their scope is. But understanding how they're going to use the funds, I think that's the justification. And I think for other people who apply for this, also have that realization that, I mean, this is not, these funds aren't really used to use fundraising to use for other things. And so I think outside that purview, so I think the $3,000, and, and they work a huge area. And the work they do, yeah, it's very hard work, I mean, and I know they do excellent. So, I mean, as far as the dollars, and so I'm grateful that they're able to raise dollars to support because, again, this is important work, and it's, it's work that's very hard and extremely necessary, especially in our area, so.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed. Thank you.
Item 12H, the governing body is asked to consider and approve an appointment to the Zoo Advisory Board. Kristi?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. We had one, two advisory board members stepped down because they were moving to Texas. They didn't want to commute from the meeting. So we reached out for applications. We received one. The board has considered this application, and we do recommend that you approve it. You do have the option to deny and delay.
I move that we approve the, I'm sorry, I move that we approve the appointment to the, Jessica Demo to the complete, the remaining months of Mr. Lobster.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passed.
Thank you.
Item 12I is an executive session. We don't anticipate any action being taken after that executive session. So if you'd like to take up the consent agenda, and then the commissioner reports, we could shut down Channel Eight afterwards. The consent agenda item is item J 1 through 3.
I move that we approve consent agenda items number J 1 through 3.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a second. Any discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That item passes. Commission reports. Commissioner Dick?
All right. I'm glad I get to go first. Congratulations, Anika and Melinda, on their very long tenure with the city. Big integral parts to our city, and you can definitely see with Melinda, who's not here anymore, but, oh, she is. She's hiding behind a bike, which doesn't happen often. But, I mean, just like, like I said with the Moody's rating that we got, I mean, that is a direct, a direct testament to her work with the city, and, I mean, the amount that we save when that happens is just amazing. So thank you for all the time you've done with the city, and congratulations, and good luck on retirements. And I know you want to hang around here, do numbers anyway. Also, in a similar thing, not with the city, but Phil Esgrino with Black Hills. He's also retiring, which is their great partner with the community, and he actually won a Summit Award, which is the highest award that Black Hills Energy can give to any employee. So congratulations to Phil. Also, like Melissa said, great job with the city and everybody with Fall Fest and also Community Mexican Fiesta. Two of the best events that we put on as a community, and, and good participation, good to get some of those community festivals back in town and, and getting them and going again, back to the former glory that they had. And then the last thing I wanted to say is it's just our vaccination rates in Finney County, we're doing really well. So if we're talking about at least one dose of our eligible population, Finney County is number two in the state after Johnson County, which has 70% of their eligible population, at least having one dose. Finney County is at 69%. Douglas, which is Lawrence, is 65%, Shawnee, which is Topeka, 64%, and Harvey County is 64%. So not only are we number two in the state, we're actually really far apart from number two. So anybody who is able to, please consider getting that vaccine. It really does reduce the symptoms and the severity of COVID. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Enru?
So I just, I, well, Phil Esgrino is actually a backyard neighbor, so just to let you know, he's keeping really busy. So we visited a couple of times near our dumpster, which I, which is exciting to hear, just all of his plans. And so he has had an incredible career, and again, the partnership. Anika, Anka, and then, and then Melinda, I, you know, these are the kind of people who are what makes the city work. A lot of times we talk about the city as, as you think about buildings and streets and all those things, but really it's people. And so Melinda's, your leadership for so many years and the stability it's brought and only to commission after commission after commission. We change over a lot compared to you, but you, you've really helped us each and every one. I remember when I first came on as a commissioner, and going through the budget process your first time is extremely enlightening and overwhelming. But you really made the process very easy and manageable, and also helped understand how important, and always keeping, making sure that you, that you understood that these are taxpayer dollars, that these are dollars that are hard earned by the people who live here in Garden City, and so how we spend these dollars is really important. Our Moody's rating is, that's, wow. And to go out on rates like this, that I've never seen, yeah, that's been, that was really exciting. So that's very, I just want to say thank you for your incredible work, and I know that those who follow you all and your staff, obviously, not only do they love you, but they love working for the city, and so, thank you. I, I did have a suggestion, maybe you could apply for that mural. There's a mural application, so you could take that painting. Stuart could get that for you, so, I'm just kidding. Like you need one more thing to do. I do want to just say thank you for just all of the really great activities and things that are happening in Garden City. It's so much fun to be able to go out and see lots of people, and then, you know, really enjoy just spending time in our city. The cool weather would be nice. I'm really excited for the cool weather. I wish some of the events had been a little bit cooler. I, I don't stay as late as I used to. I, I can't take the heat. But it was really exciting to see the things that were happening. A lot of people have been asking this, and so people, fall cleanup is coming in October. I know it, we're still in September, but October is right around the corner. Fourth through the 15th, this is the time now to start cleaning out stuff and getting it out on the curb because fall cleanup, fall and spring cleanup are probably the two great, two of the greatest services that we do, and it makes our city look really great. So just to let you know that that fall cleanup is here, and when I saw it on the calendar again, and make sure that you get everything out there, because it's, really does a great job for our city. And with that, I just wanted to, to say thank you for all that you do, Melinda, again.
All right. Commissioner Ortiz?
Yeah, not a lot left to say, but ditto for what the other commissioners said, and Melinda, you will be missed. I appreciate all that you've done for us, and, and I'll be getting with you. I'll probably take you out to lunch. How about that?
For payback.
No, it's not much, but hey, it's something. Oh, but no, thank you. Also, I'd like to say thank you to all the community members and, and volunteer workers and city workers who volunteered at the Fall Fest, and what an amazing letter by Melissa to share with the commission and others. But, yeah, great opportunity to work with Mexican Fiesta. I was asked to be a fill-in judge, so that was awesome. Never done that before. It was, being a judge is tough. Yeah, I was like, I was sweating. I don't know why, but I was nervous for the girls. There was only three contestants, but they did a wonderful job, and, you know, I wanted them all to win, but it's, you just got to pick the one. So, but that went very smoothly. Yeah, and Helica Castillo Chapel was, she did an amazing job to coordinate all of that and get everything working smoothly. So congratulations to her and all of her volunteers and committee members and all of those who worked hard for that. So I know I'm missing something, but I think Aaron had a birthday yesterday. Happy birthday, Aaron Stewart. I was trying to remember off the cuff of what I had listed, but I, I left it at the office. I've been so busy lately, so, sorry. That's about it. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Euler?
Yeah, congratulations to Melinda. I mean, yeah, I just can't imagine not seeing you in the audience. I mean, I think you should just come just for fun. I mean, it's such a part of your life for the last 30 years, so. Good luck to Jared, is the interim. I think, you know, you've got big shoes to fill, but, you know, you'll do a great job in that role as well. You have a wonderful mentor and teacher, so. Fall Fest, it was fun to see the line to the bucket truck to get up in there. I mean, the line like wrapped around part of it, and I thought at one point it'd be fun to get in there, but then I saw the line, and I was like, no, I'm good. But again, you know, just being able to see all of the city departments and, you know, get to see the, the staff and the personnel, and then just all that goes into it. I mean, there's a lot of stuff behind the scenes that happens that, you know, people just don't realize. And I know that events like that just don't happen by themselves, and they're always looking for volunteers. And so any of those community events, it's really an excellent time to volunteer to help. You don't have to get there at 5:00 in the morning, but it is fun if you do. And, you know, just kind of volunteer for some of those things. It was great to be able to go to the groundbreaking at the Humane Society for their outdoor kennels, and I think that's a, that'll be a nice project to watch come to fruition. I know it's something that they've been wanting to do for a long time, and so it was great to be able to attend that, and that's all I have.
Okay, just a good pre-meeting this morning on the discussion of our, our legislative agenda for what we'll be looking at for the 2021 legislative season. Also, the discussion on how we're moving forward in our community as we grow with some projects that we do have in our community. So a lot of good discussion and input on that. Also, I've been doing a lot of presentations to second and third, and possibly I've heard possibly fourth grade classrooms throughout the district. They're doing civics studies and government and the structure of government, and so they wanted to visit with the, those classrooms wanted to visit with the mayor and get an idea of the city's structure and what the mayor's role is in the community. So I've been out visiting with those students quite a bit, and it looks like I'll have another, getting some more classes on my calendar. But good discussion with those children, and the biggest question or that I always get is, well, are you the president? And it's like, no, I'm just the mayor, you know, second and third graders, come on. But then the comment that I always receive from all of them is, wow, you are tall, so. But it's great to go out and visit the classrooms and get input from them. Other than that, that's all I've got. Do we want to take a short break, or do we want to just go right into executive session? Go right into executive session? Okay. Somebody would like to entertain a motion? Do you know the length of time? On that?
15 minutes, Mike. 15 minutes, and Mike and I and Randy Grisell to join you.
I'm sorry, I didn't bring the change.
Okay. I request that we go into executive session pursuant to KSA 754319B6 pertaining to preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property for 15 minutes. And in that, we request Mike Muirhead, Matt Allen, and Randy Grisell.
And the reason would be possible contract for purchase of property.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a time?
Yeah, he said 15 minutes.
15 minutes.
What? Starting at what time?
Okay, starting at 2:28 to 15 minutes plus that, 43.
I just need to start.
That one I could actually do.
There's been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We'll go into executive session then.